Hello, this is Joe Pearson, the project planner for this application. This is the presentation for the River Park Boulevard Electronic Billboard Project filed by Lars Suxted for Outfront Foster Interstate LLC. Very good executive summary on the background and proposed project. On February 2nd, 2023, the commission denied a special use permit and recommended city council deny three related permits which would have allowed for a electronic billboard, which will be further described in this presentation. As the final decision maker for the specific plan amendment and the development agreement is the city council. And to ensure that the city council had the opportunity to review the whole of the project, all related entitlements are being presented to the city council for their consideration. City staff filed a request for review of the planning commission's denial of the specific plan or the special use permit. Staff continues to recommend approval of the project as originally proposed by the applicant based upon the authorization of the exclusive negotiation agreements by city council, which identified potential locations. Compliance with state law, laws established by the California Department of Transportation, which is the agency responsible for freeway safety, inconsistency with applicable policies and regulations, as well as the results of the environmental review which identified all impacts as less than significant with the incorporation of the appropriate mitigation measures. In summary, at this public hearing, the city council has the option to move forward with the approval of the project as recommended by staff or provide direction to deny the project in accordance with planning commission's recommendations and direct staff to return at a date certain with the appropriate denial resolutions. The applicant is requesting multiple permits which include a special use permit development agreement and specific plan amendment to allow for the installation operation of the electronic billboard on an approximately 0.25 acre undeveloped site located in the River Park specific plan area. The special use permit allows for the development of an electronic billboard, which would include a digital display of advertisements of various business activity services or products. The top of the billboard would be approximately 60 feet in height above the ground and the dimensions of the electronic billboard would be fourteen and a half feet in height and forty-eight feet, forty-eight and a half feet in width. The electronic billboard would have a two-sided LED digital display, which would have a dimension of fourteen feet in height and forty-eight feet in width. The special use permit will also include minor landscape improvements within the adjacent Caltrans right-of-way. These will include the removal of the existing eucalyptus trees and the planting of alternatives subject to Caltrans approval. The proposed development agreement will allow for the use of city property for the purpose of electronic of a freeway adjacent digital display billboard and outline the required public benefits to be provided by the development. The proposed specific plan amendment would amend the River Park specific plan to allow for freeway adjacent digital display billboards within the River Park specific plan. The project is located between the US Highway 101 and River Park Boulevard approximately 850 feet north of Vineyard Avenue in the northern part of the city of Oxnard. The project site, as shown, is currently undeveloped, city-owned property located within the River Park specific plan area. The areas surrounding the project site consist of a mix of residential and commercial land uses. To the west and south of the project site across US Highway 101 is the Espinon Commercial Shopping Center. To the southeast are retail commercial uses adjacent to Vineyard Avenue. These commercial or retail uses are zoned as River Park specific plan. On the northeast side of River Park Boulevard is a place of worship and single-family residents that are part of the El Rio West neighborhood and zoned as multiple, multiple family residential plan development and single-family residential plan development. To the north are two and three-story Paseo del Rio apartments, which are also part of the River Park specific plan. And further to the northeast within the River Park specific plan are additional apartments that are three stories and beyond. The apartment is the collection shopping center. The table shown here summarizes the land uses and zoning designations of the project site and adjacent properties. The project sites zoning designation is River Park specific plan and the land use designation is commercial general under the 2030 general plan. On June 18th, 2019, the city council approved and authorized the mayor to execute an exclusive negotiation agreement or ENA with Outfront Foster Interstate LLC for potential digital billboard sites. Under the terms of the ENA, Outfront Foster is given the exclusive right to negotiate with the city for an initial six-month period and two additional six-month terms if the projects were being diligently pursued by Outfront Foster. The ENA is currently on the Seventh Amendment, which runs through June 6th, 2023. Prior to consideration of the subject requests, city council must take action on amendments to the Oxnard City Code to permit freeway adjacent digital display billboards on parcels designated as commercial industrial or public facilities within 400 feet of US Highway 101 within the city of Oxnard and approve an amendment to the River Park specific plan to allow the sign in accordance with the Oxnard City Code. Each freeway adjacent digital display billboard shall be separated from every other freeway adjacent digital display billboard by at least 2,000 feet with a maximum of four to be allowed in the city. For some background on the River Park specific plan, the specific plan was adopted by the city council in September of 2002, 2002, together with the general plan amendment, zone change, annexation, development agreement, and EIR certification related to the River Park specific plan approval. The original River Park specific plan allowed for the phase development of approximately 2,800 units and two and a half million square feet of commercial development. Since that time, seven amendments have been approved to the River Park specific plan. The project is located on an approximately 0.25 acre undeveloped site located between the US Highway 101 and River Park Boulevard, approximately 150 feet north of Vineyard Avenue in the northern part of the city of Oxnard. The proposed site improvements include the installation of electronic sign. City staff has reviewed the proposed sign and determined it would not have a significant impact on the future development of the city on parcel in the area should they be developed in the future. As the sign is controlled remotely, no parking is required and any rare event onsite work is required. There is sufficient space onsite. The pole, as shown, are the elevations of the proposed sign. The pole would extend approximately 40 feet below ground and approximately 45 and a half feet above ground. A portion of the pole above ground would be painted primarily gray except for the upper ten and a half feet, which would be painted black. The pole design has been kept simple with the gray color to minimize the visual impact of the pole itself. The top of the billboard will be approximately six feet in height above the ground and the dimensions of the sign would be fourteen and a half feet in height and forty-eight and a half feet in width. The height of the sign is intentionally measured from the adjacent freeway grade in the ordinance, which has a 55-foot maximum height from the freeway grade to the bottom of the sliding face. This form of measurement is used to ensure a consistent maximum height due to portions of the freeway which are significantly above or below the adjacent grade. This method of measurement will ensure a consistent view of the signs as people travel along the highway and that all billboards are treated and viewed equally. Shown on the screen are renderings of the proposed sign as viewed from the north and southbound lanes of Highway 101, as well as from the nearby residential project. As previously mentioned, the project will include minor landscape improvements that will require the removal of the eight existing eucalyptus trees subject to Caltrans approval because they are currently located within the US Highway 101 right-of-way. In addition, the project would include the removal of all dead wood located in the vicinity of the eucalyptus trees. The project would include the placement of small multi-trunk act entries with a maximum height of 15 feet along with low ground cover and shrubs. The proposed development agreement outlines the required public benefits to be provided by the future development. As currently drafted, this includes a 30-year term monetary payments which shall be 30% of the annual net revenue with a minimum guarantee of 150,000 per year. This would result in approximately four and a half million to 8.4 million over the term of the agreement. The DA allows for the city's usage of the billboard to the extent that commercial advertising time of the billboard is unsold and unavailable. The DA allows for emergency notifications. It essentially requires that Outfront Foster make the billboard available to Caltrans and the California Highway Patrol for the purposes of Amber Alerts and for emergency or disaster notifications by local, state, or federal agencies. The development agreement includes a discount for Oxnard dealers and Chamber of Commerce members of 10%. The DA DA also places prohibitions on the messaging, which includes any messaging which is inherently false, misleading, libelous, promotes the sale or use of firearms or tobacco products whether directly or indirectly, promotes adult entertainment, products, conventions, events, or websites, contains obscene matter as that term is defined in local California or federal law. And lastly, the development agreement would allow for the use of city property through a lease agreement. The River Park specific plan amendment would add the type 7C freeway adjacent digital display billboard building type, provide development standards for type 7C freeway adjacent digital display billboards, adjust landscaping requirements to remove freeway planting requirements where billboards are proposed. And this specific fan itself will defer to the Oxnard City Code for specific standards related to the billboards. The city's 2030 general plan land use designation for the subject site is commercial regional. The proposed use is commercial, consistent with the 2030 general plan. Consistency with the 2030 general plan is defined by the relationship between 2030 general plan policies and the proposed project. Many policies are directly or indirectly applicable to the proposed project. Some of the key policies are shown here. The project has been designed to be consistent with the proposed development standards and applicable mitigation measures. These include separation requirements for residential uses and limitations on illumination levels. Based on photometric analysis provided, the light levels at the existing multifamily residential uses would be approximately 0.2 foot candles or less because the lighting level would be less than 0.5 foot candles. The proposed project would not or would result in a less than significant lighting impact on existing residential uses. The proposed project site and River Park is located within a designated urban village which contains other urban uses compatible with large-scale advertisement. Also, as the sign is located along the freeway corridor, which contains other similar signage, including the collection sign, the auto center sign, and the Espinon sign, the projects consistency review with general plan policies is further detailed in the staff report. And the proposed project has been determined to be consistent with the general plan and the property's land use designations. As noted, as previously noted, the city is concurrently processing a ordinance amendment to allow for freeway adjacent digital display billboards. The proposed ordinance amendment includes development standards which will be applicable to all freeway adjacent digital display billboards developed in the city. The proposed project has been designed to be consistent with the proposed ordinance as further detailed in the staff report. Additionally, the project must comply with the final ordinance as adopted. Therefore, if any changes occur to the proposed development standards, the project will be required to be amended to bring it into compliance or find alternative locations. An environmental consultant, under the supervision of planning department staff, prepared a IS MND which evaluated potential environmental impacts of the proposed projects. The IS MND was prepared pursuant to the requirements of the California Environmental Quality Act or CEQA. The city prepared a mitigated negative declaration. The MND was released for a 30-day public comment or public review period. The city received four comment letters. Comments and responses have been included in the MND and changes to the draft MND for the final MND were made based on the comments. The final IS MND includes a mitigated mitigation monitoring and reporting program. Details processed or the program details the process to implement required mitigation measures. After implementation of the standard conditions and mitigation measures, all potentially significant impacts would be reduced to less than significant levels. Specifically, the MND found that the implementation of the proposed project would result in potentially significant impacts associated with biological resources, cultural resources, and noise on wildlife species. Mitigation measures have been required to reduce each potentially significant impact to be less than significant. The mitigation measures that have been required within the MND would reduce potential significant impacts. These measures include conducting a pre-construction survey for active bird nests and conducting focused protocol surveys for the least bells vario. Monitoring and collecting if necessary any discovered archaeological or or the potential significant impacts would be reduced to less than significant. No remaining significant impacts would occur with respect to aesthetics. Although the MND determined that there would be less than significant lighting impacts, the MND includes mitigation measures that are recommended to further reduce the less than significant impacts. These measures have include allowing for remote shut-off in the event of malfunction and conducting illumination verification tests. With the inclusion of the mitigations for the areas noted above, the project will not have a significant impact on the environment. During the planning commission hearing on June 19th, the commissioners asked a series of questions as a result of staffs and the applicant teams' presentations. Comment, one comment letter was received and one public comment was made during the public comment period. The questions and comments were generally in regards to impacts on views and lighting. Following the commission's deliberation, a motion of intent to deny the project as they cannot make all of the findings required to support the project was made. These included compliance with adopted policies, concerns regarding safety and general welfare, in compliance with development standards, impacts on traffic safety, and appropriateness of the size and scale of the billboard. The planning commission continued the hearing to February 2nd, 2023 to ratify the action by approving resolutions of denial. On February 2nd, 2023, six members of the planning commission were present with one absent. The commissioners who were not present at the January 19th meeting confirmed they had reviewed the staff materials and watched the video of the commission's January 19th meeting. One of the commissioners who was previously present at the January 19th meeting was absent at the February 2nd meeting. On February 2nd, 2023, the commission voted six, six to zero with one commissioner absent, absent to adopt a resolution denying the special use permit and recommending denial of the specific plan amendment and development agreement to city council. While while the commission was required to deny the project based upon the recommended changes to the ordinance, the commission did raise concerns about the proximity to residential due to potential lighting and visual impacts. As previously noted, as the decision maker for the specific plan amendment and the development agreement is the city council. City staff filed a request for review of the planning commission's denial of the special use permit to ensure that the city council had the opportunity to review the whole of the project. The primary concerns raised at the planning commission meeting and reasons for denial were related to the projects inconsistency with the recommended amendments to River Park or to the freeway adjacent digital display billboards ordinance and visual impacts on residential properties. Concerns were raised regarding the lighting impacts on the residential properties, in particular, the properties to the north. While the project would be visible from the residential areas in cities, city staff and the city's CEQA consultant analyzed lighting impacts on any residential properties, which would include any residentially zoned properties both in the city of Oxnard and the county of Ventura. The MND found that subject to the proposed ordinance and required mitigation measures, there would not be a significant lighting impact based upon the recommendations from the International Commission on Endemits. A site-specific lighting study was prepared for the project to analyze the project's impact on adjacent residential. While unlike the, the study assumes the worst-case scenario of an all-white sign to determine the greatest lighting impact that would occur. As these signs are oriented towards the freeway and include direction-oriented movers to direct lighting, the lighting projected towards any residential properties would be limited. Per the lighting study, the maximum illumination in the direction of the nearest residential residentially zoned property is 0.2 foot candles at approximately 100 feet. This is significantly below the city's adopted lighting requirements, which requires that projects be illuminated to a level of one to seven foot candles throughout a project's exterior area. Therefore, any additional lighting generated by this billboard would likely be negligible. As it relates to visual impacts, the billboard is within the US Highway 101 corridor, which is generally characterized by urban or high-density development, as well as other similar large-scale signage such as the existing Auto Center Collection Espinon signs. In addition to these signs, there are numerous larger illuminated freeway signs, including electronic ones along corridor. The proposed billboard would be consistent with the overall nature of the corridor. And lastly, the proposed 100-foot setback is consistent with the city's previous approval of the collection electronic sign, which is approximately 110 feet away from residentially zoned property. As noted, a site-specific lighting study was prepared for the project site. These diagrams show, these diagrams from the study show that the lighting that would be eliminated from the billboard. This is a worst-case scenario and does not account for existing ambient lights to give a clear impact of the billboard. As shown, these signs are primarily oriented towards the freeway, so lighting at the adjacent residential properties are minimal at 0.2 foot candles. Also, brightness shall be adjusted based on ambient lighting. So the brightness would be reduced from sunset to sunrise. Also, for reference, based on a study of existing lighting levels along River Park Boulevard, the average illumination illumination is three-foot candles with certain areas having levels of up to six-foot candles due to nearby street lighting fixtures. Based on the site study, illumination at the nearest residential property again is 0.2 foot candles, which is far below the levels at the existing street separating it from the adjacent residential uses. Some comments were made about the impacts to the residential areas within the county of Ventura's El Rio neighborhood. The proposed billboard is approximately 1,700 feet from the closest residentially zoned property within the El Rio community. As it relates to the county of Ventura's El Rio neighborhood, the property is not only approximately 1,700 the property is not only approximately seventeen hundred feet away from the residential areas. It is separated by a variety of commercial and office developments, which contain multiple two- to four-story buildings as well as the freeway overcrossing. Given the relatively flat topography and intervening developments, the view of the proposed billboard would be very limited if visible at all. This is indicated by the inability to see the existing trees on the project site or the existing espionade sign, which though slightly further away from the El Rio neighborhood, is approximately fifteen feet taller than the proposed billboard. A community workshop was held on December twentieth, two thousand twenty-one. Public notice signs were posted onsite. Notifications were mailed to all property owners within the River Park neighborhood. Approximately two thousand notices were mailed and eight members of the community attended this meeting and two people spoke on the items. The video from the online workshop was also posted on the city's website for members of the public to view separately. The primary concern identified at the community workshop was related to the general allowance of the electronic billboards and lighting impacts. Both aesthetics and lighting impacts were analyzed in the environmental document, and it was determined that with the implementation of the project's mitigations, the impact would be less than significant. There was also a request for an additional site rendering showing the sign from the adjacent residential property was, which was prepared and included in the staff report as well as this presentation. Following the community workshop, there were other notifications and opportunities for public comment. These included the sequel notice, which was published in the newspaper as well as mailed out. The January nineteenth and February second planning commission meetings, which included publications in the newspaper, onsite posting, and a mail notice. And for the city council hearing, again, an onsite posting was done, it was published in the newspaper and mailed to property owners within three hundred feet as well as email to all interested parties which had previously submitted comments or attended the community workshop or other meetings. As identified in the staff report, the city council has the option to move forward with one, the approval of the project with the adoption of the resolutions and ordinances listed under option one in the staff report recommendation, or two, provide direction to deny the project and direct staff to return at a date certain meeting with the appropriate resolutions of denial. As previously noted, staff continues to recommend approval of the project as originally proposed by the applicant based upon the city council's authorization and approval, continued extensions of the E N As with both Outfront Foster with Outfront Foster since two thousand nineteen, which identified potential freeway-adjacent digital display billboard locations with the with the increased separation from residential uses requested by the planning commission as part of the recommendation on the ordinance. Again, the subject billboard location would not be allowed. The staff also continues to recommend approval of the billboard as the project would comply with state laws established by the California Department of Transportation or Caltrans, which again is the agency responsible for regulating freeway safety, consistency with the general plan zoning and the environmental review, which specifically noted that the lighting impacts which does not allow an increase in illumination at any residentially zoned property by more than point five foot candles and therefore would not have a significant impact on any adjacent residential uses.